Report recommendation of approval of draft facade improvement grant agreement with Shorty's Restaurant for the sale of facade improvements at 123 West Irving Park Road in the amount not to exceed
I'm over.
Director, you have a presentation?
If anybody's interested in seeing it, I absolutely...
Second.
Go ahead if you have a... Oh, any questions? No questions?
I'm gonna wait till...
Oh, okay. Go ahead.
It will be brief. So, I think everybody knows where Shorty's is. These are the existing photos of what it looks like today. The owner, the new owner, has requested or submitted an application for a facade improvement grant. And so, one of the things he'd like to do is paint the edge of the canopy yellow. Another thing that he'd like to do is paint the sign, just to kind of give it a little boost over, you know, kind of the existing situation. They are proposing some arborvitaries along the rear property line to screen the property from the train year-round and beautify the property. They are also proposing two-tiered planter boxes on the stairs in front of the edge of the canopy. And so, those are either gonna be unilock pavers or some sort of other paver-type material, and he's proposing to install perennials in there and some shrubs. So, the request was sent to the Streetscape Committee, and he did get three quotes. The lowest quote totaled $20,000 for the project. When it came to scoring criteria for the project, he did earn 12 points, which is equivalent to 37.5% return or reimbursement on the total project cost for a maximum amount not to exceed And the Streetscape and Economic Enhancement Committee recommended 4-0 to recommend approval of the grant. And that concludes my presentation.
Any questions? Go ahead. All the women names?
I was reading in the proposed facade and site improvements about the color. It said that they were proposing yellow, but the Streetscape Committee felt strongly in favor of another color that better complements the existing colors, materials of the building, or design guidelines of the city. So, is it yellow, or is it some other different color?
So, I don't know if there was a typo in that. The staff memo to the committee said, "The guidelines for design in Wooddale do suggest earth tones that match the color of the building." So, the language that was put in the staff report was, "If the Streetscape Committee feels that the color isn't matching, or the yellow's too bright, or you want it to be a different color that's more earth tones, the property owner is open to suggestions." And so, there wasn't any discussion about that at the committee, or there was no suggestion to change it, so it's still yellow.
Alderman Jacob?
So, I was at the meeting, and there was a discussion about it. I wasn't fond of it, but the meeting before I didn't miss. Alderman Curialy was there, that meeting, but, you know, I would've preferred a red or something, but it did say from the first meeting that they did prefer the yellow because they wanted it to stand out more. And, you know, I kind of asked the rest, the other three people what their thoughts were, and everybody's like, "If it's gonna stand out more, that's fine. It's not like the whole build, you know, it's just the awning." And it's red now, so, you know, making it red again wouldn't really did anything. So, that's why we said, you know, "Okay." It sounded like as, and maybe Alderman Curialy might be able to, you know, go further on this, but it sounds like I said at the meeting before, he was open to other colors, but he really preferred to do the yellow.
Alderman Curialy, go ahead.
When he first came in, he proposed yellow or red, and the committee's discussions, there were back and forth. There wasn't a unanimous decision one way or the other. I was okay with yellow, some preferred red. My feeling was leave it up to him. It's his building, if he feels happy with that. Yellow is an earthy tone in some respects, so, it's on that level, so... So, the decision was, it was gonna be a split vote, so let him do what he wants.
Alderman Art Woods?
Yeah, just to chime in a little bit, A, I would let the owner, of course, pick the colors unless they were really out there, but in keeping with old diner drive-in places, those high visual impact colors are really what they use, so kinda is in keeping. It doesn't look as pleasing on this rendering, but I think it'll look much nicer, certainly with the whole thing painted out, than it does now. So, I think we'll be okay with the yellow.
Any other questions? There's no other questions, roll call, please. In favor?
Alderman Art Woods?
Yes.
Alderman Curialy?
Yes.
Alderman Messina?
Yes.
Alderman Jacob?
Yes.
Alderman Sesmerski?
Yes.
Alderman Ames?
Yes.
Alderman Ardi Woods?
Yes.
Alderman Catalano?
Yes, motion carries. Next is multiple text amendments to the Unified Development Ordinance, Chapter 17, and Sign Code, Chapter 13. Director?
Thank you, Chairman Catalano. So, we are proposing a number of text amendments, probably about 14 of them, to the UDO. Obviously, the more you use a document and you apply it to certain situations as you're reviewing permits, things come up where there's inconsistencies, or it's unclear, or, you know, other things. And, or you find something isn't covered at all, and it needs to be. And so, we save these up and try to bring, you know, a handful or a little bit more once or twice a year to kind of clean up code issues. And so, I'll walk you through them. The first one relates to tree removal requirements. So, when the UDO was updated in 2022, the tree replacement requirements were doubled. So, if you had a very large tree, the largest, you know, like 30 inches or more, instead of having to replace it with five trees, you now had to replace it with 10 trees. And this is a pretty excessive, this is really stringent. I'm familiar with a lot of tree preservation ordinances, I've written them in the past. I think the North Shore suburbs are probably most known for their, you know, highly restrictive tree preservation ordinances. And I looked up Lake Forest and Highland Park, and our current regulations for replacement are pretty much equivalent to Lake Forest. So, the staff would like to go back and analyze this, because we see some properties having difficulty with it, and we don't wanna discourage people from coming here and doing business. But in the meantime, we wanted to allow people the ability to request a variation from the tree replacement requirements. It doesn't mean it's gonna be granted. They would still have to justify their hardship or the reasons why it should be granted, but right now, you can't even request it. So, here's an example. So, when Linmark came through for the apartments, their project required 260 replacement trees. You couldn't even fit them all on the property. The most they could possibly fit on the property were 95. Of the 260, 140 were to replace prohibited trees. Usually, in most tree preservation ordinances, you don't have to replace prohibited trees. The community would like you to take those down. And so, they still had to replace those one-to-one. So, they still had 100 trees that they couldn't plant on-site, and if they were gonna pay the fee in lieu, which is their only option, it was $65,000. And that sometimes can be a deal killer for a project. We ended up doing a deviation for that, for the PUD, but there was also issues with Starbucks couldn't fit all the replacement trees on-site. And Bridge Development, where forward space is in that development, they needed a 40% reduction on tree replacement requirements, and that was with the old code, and we've since doubled it. So, this is kind of a stopgap measure until we get a chance to take a closer look at this and maybe update it next time, but it would only allow people the opportunity to request a variation, and then they'd have to justify it.
Mayor, do you have a question?
Yeah, a couple things. We definitely wanna give them the chance for the very, ask for the variation. We had the same problem with parking. We didn't have, you couldn't ask for a variation. I think we've changed that. But this is, okay, so, to vary the regulations related to tree removal and replacement. So, I know next door, when we had the one developer coming through in the property next door to the City Hall, there's a lot of buckthorn, dead trees. And I believe at that time, we said, "Well, we're not gonna replace those, but we wanna replace the good ones." So, do we have to do this whole rewrite? I mean, can we give staff, when it comes to buckthorn and dead trees, some kind of latitude on that? So, 'cause I'm thinking, so if the next developer comes, we're gonna waste two months for a tree variance or something, just stalling the project. I know we gave a break before, so what's the right way to do this? So, we just, in the sake of still doing it right, right? We want the trees and whatnot, and depending how they put the building or whatever, you're right, it may not be able to fit, and there's always some, I think, at that point, we had, I don't remember what it was, but there's something we can do, some kind of staff...
Discretion.
Right, right.
So, the property next door was the one I was talking about, the Linmark, and so, since they did a PUD, they didn't need a variation, because we have the ability to grant deviations only with PUDs, and they don't have to meet the variation standards. So, this is for a project that maybe only required a special use. So, we do have flexibility with the PUD. We can absolutely write in some discretion or write in a change, as you're suggesting, and we can kind of move that up the ladder for a text amendment, but it would require a text amendment in order to give the staff the ability to do that.
Okay, so it's not, go ahead. So, it's not something we can do right now, has to go to CDC first or something, right? They take it, probably?
I can double-check with our legal counsel.
Just because I know we already went through that, even with the PUD, with the first guy or whatever, I know we did something, I can't remember what it was. And I think we even lowered the fee or whatever was due at the time. Maybe you guys could look it up, but before next week's meeting, we can hear what it is, but...
Alderman Woods? Ardi Woods?
Yeah, so, I'm assuming I'm gonna filter that long-winded statement?
Sorry.
So, can we just eliminate the prohibited trees from the tree count?
Yes, we could add that in for next week.
Yeah, I mean, so that we don't have to go too far out over our skis and then have the allowance, so that, that should in and of itself eliminate a lot of issues, because that was a constant thing that came up, the tree count included those, and those tended to be the majority of them, because most of the bigger lots were left to run wild, and that is what happened, so... If we could do that, I think that that would solve the majority of the issues.
That would be a great help, because the project had 65% of the trees on the property were prohibited. Is, just to clarify, would that be in addition to this language to allow them to request a variation, or in lieu, in addition?
That's what I'm proposing, yes.
Perfect, we can absolutely do that.
So, we're in agreement?
Yes.
Okay, continue.
All right, so the second one. When variations are granted, they're granted on the property, and then they live with the property forever. So, if you, if the city council approves a variation to reduce a side yard setback, that is forever, and it sticks with the property no matter who buys the house. Special uses, when they're granted, in most situations, by state law, they run with the property, same type of thing. So, a new owner comes along and wants to buy your restaurant with a bar that got a special use, it runs with the property, so they can sell it to the next guy, and he can go ahead and continue that special use, as long as he operates it the same way and within the parameters authorized in the special use ordinance. When we amended the UDO in 2022, it was changed to run with the property owner. So, what happens now is if your property was granted a special use, and let's say, here's some example special uses, or a church, or an animal hospital, a drive-through window, a pet store, a restaurant with a bar, a funeral home, or gas station, let's say you sell that, you've been granted a special use, and you sell it to someone else. If it's tied to you, and you're no longer the owner, the new owner has to go through that whole special use process, again, with a public hearing before the CDC, and spend money on all the plans. And so, this is problematic, and it's very unusual, I hadn't seen it before, so what we've been doing since I got here, since the UDO has been updated, is basically changing it in a condition in every single ordinance, saying it runs with the property and not with the owner. And so, we'd like to clear that up, so it's no longer a problem.
Alderman Art Woods?
Could you repeat your last statement?
So, what we'd like to do is eliminate the requirement that the special use runs with the owner, and just leave it, the special use runs with the property as it should, basically everywhere else that I've ever known of.
So...
Go ahead.
So, in the running with the owner thing, so in the case of the gas station, if I buy Mike's gas station, who had that special use, and I keep it, I buy Mike's gas station, the corporation, and stays Mike's gas station, does the special use then stay in effect?
It will if we make this change.
Well, I'm saying if we didn't make the change, though...
It expires, it goes away because it's limited to...
The business wouldn't have expired.
It's tied to the property owner.
Right, and the property owner technically would be the corporation, so if I bought the corporation, the owner didn't change. That would be, which typically, that happens in the bar business and restaurant businesses, they hold over the name. Anyway, so I don't have a problem switching.
There may be such exceptions, that we would evaluate on a case-by-case basis.
Mayor, go ahead.
You said we made that change in '22? Just curious, why would we make that change?
I asked the same question. The response I got was, one of the consultants that we hired made the suggestion, and...
Oh, you say that's...
Oh, that's what it was, okay.
And it went, people...
When they were cleaning up the language, and it's like I told you, so, that's how the lawyers keep making money, just keep rewriting stuff.
Well, and that's why I brought up, what I brought up, is typically, you're gonna buy the corporation, and I believe under the law that that would be able, they would be able to hold that same zoning. If I changed the corporation, or they wouldn't sell me, then I wouldn't be able to do it, but...
So, the next one is related to public sidewalks. They are required when there's a new development, but the language isn't incredibly clear, and so, there's some proposing some clarifying language that it be installed for new construction and additions if you're adding more than 75% of floor area. So, if you're almost doubling the size of your building, you should install a sidewalk. That's, it's basically new construction and massive redevelopments.
Go ahead, Alderman Woods?
There are a lot of areas where we don't have sidewalks, and if we don't have them, is there a reason that we don't have them?
So, we do, when we incorporate property, and there's no sidewalk, obviously, it happens at that point, sometimes there are missing sidewalk connections for one reason or another. Either the developer didn't install them, or they weren't required, and so usually, what happens is the city comes in for those properties, and we fill the sidewalk gaps. Public Works, you know, brings proposals, and we do that every year. And so, it does come up, it's probably come up three times in the last year for projects.
Alderman Jacob?
Yeah, so, kind of to go along with what Alderman Woods was asking, so, like, I know here, we're talking all properties, not just commercial, so, because I could think in our ward, several subdivisions, that there are no sidewalks, so if somebody builds a new house there, I mean, it would be kinda silly for them to put a sidewalk in if nobody else has a sidewalk. So, currently, do, what is the code currently? Like, for, say, in Royal Oaks, somebody sold their house, bought a house, tore it down, built a much bigger house, and per the code, would have to put a sidewalk in? Because there's no other sidewalks, they would not have to put a sidewalk in?
So, the installation of public sidewalks is under the jurisdiction of the Public Works Director. So, if for some reason that happened, and there was a triggerment, a trigger for it, and there were no sidewalks in the subdivision, there was no plan to add them, and you didn't wanna do it piecemeal over time, the Public Works Director could either waive that or could require a fee in lieu, and we'd build sidewalks somewhere else, and if at one point in the future, we're gonna do the whole neighborhood, then the city could do that.
Okay, has that ever, has that ever come up? Okay, I guess the answer is yes.
Director Lang is nodding his head yes.
Yes, he's nodding, said yes, so, okay, thank you.
Well, that's one more question.
Go ahead.
So, our change wouldn't affect any of that? I don't wanna create any more, since we're, unfortunately, think we have a little more time to talk about this. If that, and that's why I was saying, are there areas where we don't have sidewalks? I wasn't off the top of my head naming them, that's what Alderman Jacob brought up, the perfect example, and obviously, they have swales and stuff, that's part of their drainage. And then you mentioned fee in lieu of, so, I would think as a development guy going in there, nobody's got sidewalks, sidewalk wouldn't enter my mind at all. There isn't one in there, and then if somebody, the building department says, "You're building the house, and yeah, you don't have to put the sidewalk in, but you're gonna have to give us $1,000 to build a sidewalk for somebody else." That would just blow my mind, although that happens on a regular basis. So, could we just, could we add something?
Language.
To part that out, so it's just clearer that...
Yes.
For everybody, both the outside, you know, contractors or builders or homeowners, and then also, as a directive inside for staff to go, "That's, that's not a thing." So, in cases where there are, I get it, I agree 100%, but...
Mayor, go ahead.
Yeah, so like, when we dedicated that new park over there at Spruce, so we want them to put their sidewalk in, but for some reason, when it was done many years ago, they didn't put in the sidewalk on Spruce, but they put it on whatever, whatever street it was, Arbor, is it Arbor? No.
Dunley? No.
Arbor, yeah. So, in front of those houses, yes, but the corner house, they have to put the sidewalk down the side.
Or Potter.
On Spruce, which was ridiculous. So, we're doing it now. I know when we redid Royal Oaks, all the streets, we talked about doing the sidewalks as well while we're at it, but because of, I was still, well, the right-of-way, this and that, all of a sudden, we're putting sidewalks like the way these houses were built 60 years ago, some of the sidewalks are gonna be like 10 feet away from some of these front doors, and we just left it alone. And over in, like, War II, when we redid the creek, we didn't put sidewalks in, so if somebody goes and tear down a house over there, we're not gonna make one person put in a sidewalk. So, it's gotta be some kind of exclusion.
There already is, in the, so, right now, what we're doing is we're not changing any regulations. This regulation exists, we're just clarifying the language. So, it exists in the engineering, what do we call it, manual, engineering standards manual. And so, in that manual, the Public Works Director already has discretion to do these things. And so, the UDO references the engineering standards, we're just trying to make it clear by also listing it in the UDO.
I know, but as Alderman Woods just alluded to, there's a fee in lieu of, so if somebody tears down a house, it's gonna kick in. And a few years from now, kind of different group, different members, staff, whatever, oh yeah, "Yeah, you guys gotta put it aside, oh no, it's gonna cost you three grand," and fee in lieu of. Something should be written in there now, so it's clear, right? That's all.
You either have a sidewalk or not have a sidewalk.
Right, well, we've got areas that don't have sidewalks.
Okay, we'll work on this, yes.
Okay, yeah, just, I know there's gotta be some legal...
It should be some, so, sidewalk.
I think there's existing language in the engineering manual, and we can probably just carry it over.
Alderman Jacob?
Just a quick question for Director Lang, since he nodded his, has yes before. When this happened in other areas, did we make them pay a fee? Or did we just tell them they didn't have to put a sidewalk in? What did we do in the past?
Yeah, it actually just came up within the past week. We had a new development, a new single-family home that was gonna put in, it's a corner lot, so they were gonna put in sidewalk along the front lot, and then there was no existing sidewalk trail going to the north for the property north of them. That and some utility conflicts, we thought it wasn't reasonable to have them put the sidewalk in there, so we were willing to accept a fee in lieu in case the city at some point wanted to install that sidewalk.
Go ahead, follow up.
What, well, I guess what we're saying is that we don't want there to be a fee in lieu, if there shouldn't be.
I don't know, I'm just thinking, maybe if they're willing to set, it's like, if I'm giving you money, then I might as well put the sidewalk in.
Yeah, and that's...
I might as well have the benefit of the sidewalk for a potential buyer, as opposed to handing out, if I, if there's no cost to me, that's a different question, but if I gotta pay for it anyway, I'd just as soon put it in and add value to the property. That's just me.
So, I think that's what we're getting at, is that there should be no fee in lieu of, I mean, if there's no sidewalks in the area, they shouldn't have to pay a fee or put a sidewalk in. Again, I'm just thinking of Royal Oaks, Woodside, some subdivisions in our area, there's no sidewalks there. Deer Path, there's no sidewalks. I think Alderman Ward, Alderman Woods, I think he has some streets like that, there's the creek and stuff that have no sidewalks, so...
Those are covered under, you can't put a sidewalk because of the creek.
So, these are for projects for new construction, so, you know, you're building a single-family home, it's a few hundred thousand dollars, let's say, and you paid for the land as well. Usually, the sidewalk is something, you know, that we don't hear a lot about. It's existing regulations that allow the Public Works Director to make that decision, and he obviously uses his judgment. If you wanna eliminate the fee in lieu, we can certainly look at that, if that's what the majority of the council would like to do.
All the women names?
Is, what is the fee in, is the fee in lieu equivalent to what it would cost to put a sidewalk in, or is it just a nominal? I don't know what you're talking about.
What is it?
I don't know what it is exactly.
It might be something like $20.
There's a formula.
There's a formula, or $8 a foot? There is a formula for it.
It's a $1 dollar amount by square foot, by square foot.
So, that's what the fee is? It's the equivalent to what the standard cost would be to install a sidewalk?
It's a couple of years behind price-wise, but that was the idea when they put it in.
Yeah, the fee would be cheaper than what it would cost you to put an actual sidewalk in.
So, I mean, follow...
But only because we haven't counted up with the costing pieces over, since we made up that scale, and then a couple of years from now, if somebody's gonna come and go, "We need to update that."
Right, so in Ward Four, like on the Stoneham, on the south side, there's not sidewalks, and I mean, construction of a corner home, and they weren't required to put that sidewalk in, you know, just to have one random house, have a section of sidewalk that connects to nothing. So, that's what we're saying is, so then, I guess to look... look, to say, "We're never gonna put sidewalks in on a certain street, ever," you know, I mean, I don't know what the plan was when Stoneham decided to put it only on the north side, and not the south side of the street, and if that's ever gonna change, so if somebody built, then they would put that one section in, in front of their house, that may never, you know, so, to put it in, I like the idea that you have the discretion to not include it, but the fee, you know, I don't know that I would just put it in, just for the sake of putting it in, when it literally connects to nothing, ever, if that's ever gonna change, so, I was curious what the cost was.
Alderman Woods?
Yeah, there you go, but that's, in a lot of communities, how these things start, one guy puts it in, then the next guy puts it in, and then you have a sidewalk at no cost to the community. So, the bigger question is, we want sidewalks or we don't want sidewalks? To have the code done that says, "Well, you don't have to put it in, it's just another way to go, give me another thousand dollars," I mean, it just doesn't make sense to me then. If we're saying that you're, you're building, and you're doing new development, you have to, as part of that, you have to put a sidewalk in, then you have to put the sidewalk in. To add a, go, "Well, not here, because, well, nobody, you're the, you're the first guy," just doesn't make sense.
So then there would be no exceptions to that?
Go ahead, Director.
I guess it's, it's kinda the same concept as the fee in lieu, which we accept for trees, if the, the site conditions doesn't make sense for you to plant that many trees on your property, we accept a fee in lieu, because if, if otherwise not for that, you would be required to put those trees in.
And then, on the same token, we're eliminating a bunch of stuff, and we're gonna add some discretion, so we're gonna try to eliminate that, so, part of that's a different piece, because you have design alternatives, right, that you could do different designs, all but, all but for the fact that they're gonna cover the maximum amount of lot, they would be able, or could afford to put more trees on it, it's kind of a penalty to that, you're gonna max it out, taking away areas, which, again, from a business standpoint, I'm not saying is good or bad, you know, of course, you're gonna max that out, but they have alternatives, in the tree scenario, to have the ability to add more trees if they weren't maxing out the lot with parking lots. Those same people are usually getting variances under the PUD for drive-aisles and lot coverages and, and other sign things and setbacks, again, maximizing how much ground they're covering, which further exacerbates the amount of number, or the amount of trees they're able to plant. That being said, we're already gonna reduce it, not counting the un-
Prohibited.
The prohibited trees, thank you, and then, reducing, we're adding some other language to the tree, so, my concept's the same, we're either gonna enforce things or not enforce them, and just in particular, that with the tree one, they have the ability, you know, in, in some cases, they're creating their own issue by trying to max off the lot, and then making that our issue, and it isn't, so, a little different than the sidewalk. The theory is, we're putting in sidewalks, we want sidewalks, and that's a good thing, except for areas where they absolutely are not gonna be able to go, subdivisions where the, it's a swale in front, and that's how the lots drain, which are three or four of the subdivisions around there, or the case of, they're, they're along the creek, you can't add coverage to the lot because of the flood plain and wetland there, of long-winded explanation, so, they're similar, but not, not the same.
Go ahead, Mayor.
So, like, I know, Ward Four, we put in Edgewood, right, we, we did the sidewalk, and it loops around some trees and things, trying to save trees, and there's other streets in that subdivision, in that ward, I should say, not subdivision, that we're looking to put sidewalks at some point, like, there are a couple new homes going up, why there's some eyesore homes coming down, some new homes going in, are sidewalks gonna go like right in front of those two homes, or, because we didn't have this, if fee in lieu of, or whatever, are we putting sidewalks there? I think there are two homes right next to each other.
Director, go ahead.
Typically, we have not been requiring sidewalks where there's no existing sidewalk path already.
Mr. Woods, go ahead.
Again, that's what blows my mind, that we have the code, we want sidewalks, just like we want streetlights, we wanna ride all the streets, so everybody can walk around, then we force them to walk in the street, which isn't safe, so, I guess I, I don't get it, it seems to be a little inconsistent. We either want them, or we don't want them. Every community that I build in, I gotta put a sidewalk in, I mean, it's a pretty standard thing.
Alderman, Missina?
I guess I, I understand the intent, what we're trying to do, I just, I just don't see how we could, it, it just doesn't fit every area. I can, you name one of the subdivisions, I can name another one, I mean, it just, there's eighty-five houses in one subdivision, one person coming in and being forced to put a sidewalk, well, then we have to wait how many years for the rest of those homes to be torn down and rebuilt, right? I mean, yeah, maybe you start a pattern, but, I mean, you would have, at least we would have people up in arms if that was a forced requirement, because inevitably, even though some of those houses in those subdivisions are maybe, one is about sixteen, the other's probably about, Royal Oaks is probably about thirty-five, forty, inevitably, in the next twenty years, they're probably gonna be knocked down, right? And so, I don't, I, I just don't see how we could standardize a yes, all sidewalks, no sidewalks, so, I'm not in favor.
Director Springer, go ahead.
Maybe we can move on from this, and we can look at some language and bring you more information. What's being proposed tonight is not changing what we've been doing or what is currently required, so nothing goofy you've seen, is because the Public Works Director is making decisions all the time about whether or not it makes sense to put a sidewalk here or there. None of that is proposing to change, this isn't a new regulation. It, this also, this language all exists in different areas, and so this was just to kinda copy some language from one document and put it in another, but we can certainly show you where the language is and what it says, and we can bring this back.
Sounds good, move along, let's go.
All right, so I think that was number four. Sidewalk and driveway setbacks, and so, in the memo, if you read it, it was a little bit lengthy, it, it also mentioned that this would apply to parking lots, that was an error, I apologize, that this setback is not intended for, for parking lots. So, right now, accessory structures are required to be five foot from property lines, let's say, side property lines, and sidewalks and driveways are classified as accessory structures, they meet the definition of a structure, and so, we've never applied the five-foot setback from sidewalks and driveways, because it doesn't make sense, because you need to come up to the property line to gain access, and so, we just would like to solidify what staff has been doing on a daily basis, is saying, "No, these things can go up to the property line." We have so many, like, driveways that they touch each other on each other's property, if we were to enforce this, when somebody replaced their half of it, we'd say, "No, you gotta be five feet, you know, further from the property line." So, we've been implementing it, we would like the code to reflect what has been occurring, and so we're just proposing a change for that. There is also a new change, though, the suggestion was that we limit the width of sidewalks to no more than five feet in width, a lot of other communities do that, one of the reasons is because somebody, let's say, somebody wanted to put a patio in, and they wanted to put it right up to the property line, and we say, "No, you have to be setback five feet." Well, can you put a sidewalk up to this property line? Well, yes, you can, and so, somebody can build like an eight-foot or a ten-foot wide sidewalk, and then have a patio right up on the property line, so that was why that was suggested. Any questions on that?
Alderman Art Woods?
Good question, so, in our code, in the matrix of things that are considered accessory structures, sidewalks and driveways are considered accessory?
Yes. I can read it to you, because I was prepared for the question.
Is it the definition section, or in the approved accessory structure matrix?
So, it's not there, it's in the definitions section, so-
You don't have to read that.
Okay, it, it basically says hard surfacing such as asphalt, concrete, and attached to the ground.
Gotcha.
Alderman Jacob?
Yeah, so, in your example that you gave, so could somebody put theoretically, to get around that code, put a patio in that's five foot from the sidewalk, and then a year from now say, "Oh yeah, I'm gonna put a sidewalk in right next to the patio, to extend the patio, and we allow the sidewalk to go," could they do that, or that would not be allowed?
There are ways to get around everything in every code, so, that's, that is a possibility, but again, there is a lot coverage requirement, and there's an accessory structure limitation, you can't cover more than 12% of your lot with accessory structures, so...
Okay, I mean, would, would it make sense to put something in to avoid that from happening, or not, not at this time?
It's really, if some people want to do something piecemeal, and each element of it is permitted by the code, we're, we need to be able to issue the permit for that.
Okay, thank you.
Continue.
Above-ground pools, per the UDO definitions, above-ground pools are excluded from the lot coverage calculation, however, nobody looks in the definitions section for regulations, and therefore, you couldn't, shouldn't put regulations in the definitions section, so we're basically just copying that language from the definitions section, and adding it to the swimming pool section, there's no change. The definition of lot width, it's very inconsistent throughout the UDO, lot width is supposed to be measured at the building line, but some places in the code, it says front, front yard setback line, some places it says front yard line, some places it says setback line, so we're just making it all consistent to be one word, one, one reference. We currently don't have electric vehicle charging stations allowed in our code, so technically, if somebody wanted to build one, they're not permitted, of course, we want them, and so staff has been issuing building permits for these, but we do need to establish some, some regulations for them. One of the things that the proposed regulations would eliminate is some of these things that you may have seen, that are basically mini billboards, and so, they're six feet tall, three feet wide, and then whoever the EV charger is, sells advertising on them, and so, we are proposing electric vehicle regulations, we did a lot of research, talked to other communities about their regulations, and we adopt, we're proposing something that's good for Wooddale, and we wouldn't allow this type of thing, that's the reference to the sign code, this wouldn't be allowed as appropriate signage for vehicle, electric vehicle charging stations.
Why, why would we?
Go ahead, Sarah.
Why would we not want that? We might see these all.
It's technically a violation of the exist, of the sign code, because you're only allowed to advertise things that are for sale on the property, not on other properties, that's off-premise signage, or also called billboard signage.
Continue? Oh, wait, I'm sorry, go ahead.
So, and I think you might have answered my question, but I'm thinking at the gas station, when you go to the gas station, almost all gas pumps nowadays have a mini billboard on them that, but I guess they are like advertising, "Drink Coke," and I'm assuming they sell Coke in there, or whatever they're advertising, but is that why they're able to have those?
Most communities have exempted those out from sign regulations, because they really are only intended to be viewed by the person standing right in front of them, these are more targeted to a larger audience, people driving by.
Okay, thank you.
Parking in striped spaces only, we do have some issues where there are some businesses that are parking all over the place, not in parked spaces, we've heard from the fire department, they are very concerned about a couple of these locations, where they can't get onto the site, and people are parking over the fire lanes, and so, this would just strengthen our regulations, basically, we require them to stripe the parking lot, this additional language would make people actually have to park in the striped spaces. Vehicular use area landscape, so this one is, so, this is hard to explain, which is why we want to get rid of it, so, in addition to all the landscaping requirements that we have in the city code, which are eight pages of landscaping requirements, so we have landscaping requirements for landscape islands, perimeter of your parking lot, around the base of the building, around the perimeter of the site, foundation landscaping, sign landscaping, so we've got lots of landscaping. This is something that was added in the new UDO that, that talks about interior parking lot landscaping, and so there's this additional requirement, that you have five, eight, or 10% of your interior parking lot area covered with landscaping, and so, a lot of times, you're really limited on space, because our lots are small, and you can't fit extra just random landscape islands, and people have difficulty meeting it, and it's not defined, it's not common in a lot of ordinances, I have seen it in a couple of other ones, but for, to eliminate confusion, staff has difficulty enforcing it, and all the applicants have confusion about what it actually means, so, we think we're covered with all the existing regulations we have.
Alderman Woods, go ahead.
So this is in addition to the landscape islands, this is a-
Correct, so, we, you are gonna notice no difference when this is gone, it's just a source of confusion. This, we did correct some of the graphics that were outdated, or didn't really reflect what the language was, some of those graphics were drawn, you know, a decade ago, and so we have new tools, and so we've added a few graphics that help explain things better to the public. That is the conclusion of the, the proposed text amendments, we did have the city attorney's office look at this and review it, and they had no problems, they did ask for a few changes, which we've incorporated, and the CDC had a public hearing on July 15th, and they did recommend approval of four to zero, and that concludes my presentation.
Thank you.
Thank you.
And, did we have a motion on this in a second?
No.
No?
I'll take the motion.
Okay, second, and, all in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries. Okay, so items to consider at future meetings, Brimire- Hold on, hold on, sir, go ahead. Go ahead. Director Springer?
So we just approved this, but you're gonna come back with, there are a couple things that we're gonna add some clarity in.
We were just talking about.
Throw that out there in the atmosphere.
So, this will not be going to City Council at next week's meeting.
Okay. So items to consider at future meetings, Brimire, remain in seven homes, annexation, rezoning, revised re-subdivision, and vacation of streets, and that's coming up September 12th. And next is building code amendments, RFP, to be determined at a later date, and any other items to consider? If there are none, I'll make a motion to adjourn, I'm sorry, go ahead. Yes, Alderman Woods, go ahead.
So the building code amendments, RFP, that were going out for approval?
So, I should probably update, the, and I still need to talk to the city attorney about this, but really, it's a sole-source kind of project, because we really do need to have a consultant that is familiar with working with our building codes, and has been applying them during plan reviews, and applying them in the field during inspections, and so, there's always been the idea to try to bring forward someone who was familiar with our codes, and we have the opportunity now, we are using HR Green for both plan review and inspections, and they are using the code on a day-to-day basis, they're very familiar with it, and it really would be best if they were the ones to, you know, amend the code, and so, I have requested a proposal from them to review, and then we need to discuss how that moves forward.
Thank you.
Okay, any other items, any other questions? No, okay, I'll make a motion to adjourn.
Second?
All in favor?
Aye.
Adjourn, thank you.
Okay, calling the Public Works Committee meeting to order. Okay, calling the public works committee meeting to order. Let the minute taker note the same people are present. Make a motion to approve the minutes from July 11th, 2024 for the public works committee.
Second.
Any changes, questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? That passes. Report and recommendation, approval of a proposal from Landmark Sign Group for the purchase and installation of a city entryway sign to be located on South Thorndale Avenue at the Illinois 390 eastbound exit ramp. I'll make that motion.
Second.
Thank you, Chairman. This came up during the strategic plan meeting, the desire to put a sign here. South Thorndale is under DuPage County's jurisdiction, so we've already sent over preliminary plans to them for the permit approval and this is approving the purchase and sale from Landmark Sign Group.
Okay, roll call, please.
Alderman Artwoods?
Yes.
Alderman Currielli?
Yes.
Alderman Messina?
Yes.
Alderman Jacob?
Yes.
Alderman Sasmarsky?
Yes.
Alderman Ames?
Yes.
Alderman Ardi Woods?
Yes.
Alderman Catalano?
Yes. That passes. Next, an ordinance amending the code of ordinances of the city of Wooddale, Chapter Three, Article Seven, to combine the Wooddale for Greener Tomorrow Commission and the Stormwater Management Committee into a new environmental and sustainability committee and amending Chapter Three, Article One, Section 3.106B to remove references to Wooddale for Greener Tomorrow Commission and the Stormwater Management Committee. That'll be my.
Second.
Any questions on this? All in favor?
Aye.
That passes. Next, approval of the fiscal year 2025 street light installation program. That would be my motion.
Second.
Any questions? Mayor has a question.
Alan, so we budget a hundred thousand, this is 51,000. Why wouldn't we do more since, why wouldn't we use the budget?
Director.
So we, we were fortunate that a lot of the locations that we were looking to light, if you see the map on the last page of the packet, there's quite a few of them, have available COM Ed utility poles in the area and those are much cheaper to affix a mast arm onto than a freestanding pole of our own, obviously, so we were able to save significant funds utilizing those. If there's other ideas for areas to light, we can look at them, but Ward Four is pretty well lit.
Go ahead, Mayor.
Right, but we're looking to light up every street. Question is, why wouldn't we just move on to the next section then? Or is that a problem with mobilizing or something?
Director Lang?
It's not a problem for me, so if there's other suggestions from other wards, I'm more than willing to hear them and get pricing for them.
So you're saying Ward Four is taken care of and that's what we're focused on?
Correct, yeah.
You need no other lights?
Oh, the one you got fixed, we got fixed.
Mayor?
Well, I don't know, I'm hearing little grumbling from Ward Four. Sounds like they, they have other lights or streets that need to be lit up. No, we're good? We're good?
Go ahead.
Isn't there a requirement for how many feet the lights have to be apart or something that you can't put them too close to each other, right?
Yeah, our standard is pretty much a 300 feet between lights.
And it's normally, I'm sorry.
Alderman Catalano?
It's normally between the houses, not in front of the houses.
Correct. We try to put it on the lot line whenever possible.
Go ahead.
Were a couple that I suggested along Wooddale Road, but because those are county, we were not able to put them there?
We are able to put them there. That area has been kind of targeted before for the prairie style lights and possibly expanding those, so we didn't want to put any freestanding streetlight poles there that might interfere with that later on. But if there's, you know, a desire from the council to do that, we can, we can look into that as well.
I have a question. Do all the, not being that familiar with the west side of Wooddale Road, do all, everything around here have streetlights on it to the west, even by, even by the retention pond over there?
There's a new, yeah, they're on the map.
Mayor?
Yeah, so I'm just looking at, so you got them on the corners, right? So in, in between all these blocks, you're telling me we don't need one in the middle of the block and any of these blocks?
We haven't heard much desire to put mid-block streetlights in. We can, it would meet the spacing requirement. All of those streetlights that you see in red on that map are COM Ed and those are usually overhead power lines. So we would have to, you know, directionally drill all along the street, which would get pretty pricey. We'd probably only be able to do a couple, one or two mid-blocks with the remaining budget, but if there's.
Mayor?
Isn't that what we did, like Spring Oaks and Gilbert here? I mean, we're just leaving them at the corners, so.
Spring Oaks and, I'm sorry, it was Murray and Gilbert's were a little longer run, so there was room for three or four throughout the mid-blocks. These are shorter blocks than those, but again, it would, it would meet the spacing if we wanted to do that. It would be our aluminum style pole that we would install and it wouldn't be the same throughout the ward, but again, we could do it.
So I have a question, just like the mayor said, in the middle of the blocks, sometimes driving through Ward Four at night, it seems a little dark to me on some of the streets. Would putting them in the middle of the block make sense in the ward?
I mean, I've asked residents for recommendations for if they want streetlights and I've gotten no response whatsoever, like at all.
Mayor?
But so on some of the streets that we did put the lights, we had on each, on each one of those streets, we had a couple residents that were upset, so again, it all depends who you ask and whatnot. I'm just curious what our game plan is because I'm looking and it's just corners and nothing in the center, so I'm, I'm just wondering why, if we're lighting up streets, why we're not doing that?
Director?
Yeah, we, we based it on feedback from the elected officials and residents and we have not heard a desire to put any mid-blocks in. We tried to light the areas where accidents are most likely occur, which are near the intersections.
Okay, no, no. Alderman Messina?
Yeah, that's kind of where I was leading to, right? I mean, we got a ton of heat. We were the guinea pigs and we got crushed, so I think that's a safe game plan if you're gonna go on the corners, but is there an actual policy? I know we had a lot of discussions about it, but is there an actual policy? Like we keep saying we want to light it up, light it up, light it up, light it up, but is there an actual policy or are you just gonna keep using? No offense to you, but are you just gonna use discretion based on, you know, who pressures you the most, right?
Yeah, it's, it's basically just based on feedback and, you know, common sense where accidents are occurring or where there's gaps in our streetlight network.
Yes, I see. I just felt like, again, no offense to you, it just, it felt very subjective and kind of put him in a hard spot and for him and I, it's like we, that was already dictated. I mean, we were getting the calls and things were getting marked and it was too late. So, I don't know, I, I personally, I mean, it's too late for our ward, I guess, but I, it would be ideal if we could have a consistent policy.
Yeah, mid-block streetlights are definitely where you're gonna run into concerns from residents more than the intersections.
Go ahead.
That's what I'm wondering, is that, and it, there's no knock on you again, but like, is that why you guys made the decision? Because you don't want to deal with the hassle?
It just, it kind of fit the map better. Murray was probably two or three times longer than one of these blocks. It made sense to put more streetlights along there.
And then just one last question. You said 300 feet, so a football field in between, basically?
Correct.
Wow, okay. All right, thanks.
So before going to Alderman Woods, I just have one comment. I, I thought the whole purpose of lighting this city up was for public safety. I, I didn't think it was for accidents. I thought it was for people. So, I mean, if it's.
Public safety, public safety, yeah.
Well, but again.
Public work safety.
If there's only a light on one corner, on the corners and no lights in the middle, I mean, if you're walking down the street at night, you're basically walking in the dark if you're not at a corner.
Or a sidewalk. You might be on the street.
I was gonna let that go, Mayor. I wasn't even gonna bring it up.
Alderman, Alderman Woods?
I, I was gonna address the policy issue because I thought that's, I wasn't a big proponent, but I, I went along with it. I thought that was the goal of to light up the city.
Yeah.
I don't care either way. My argument or concern all the time is that it seems like that we changed. In one area, we put up three, four lights and the other area, it's just on the corners. Again, using some of the same phraseology, it's, it's very subjective. So do we have that written?
Director Lang?
There's no, it's written that in a lack of viable petitions, we will base it on feedback from the Alderman or.
But don't we eliminate petitions altogether?
Right.
Last debate on this, those don't exist in any form.
I believe that residents can still petition and those will be given priority.
Alderman Catalano?
Yeah, so, yeah, years ago, I think we did talk about eliminating the policy as far as petition drive because like I went to a few streets and of course got all the signatures and then we mailed out the survey and then a lot of people didn't respond and that's the reason why we raised it from 30,000 to 100,000 to light up the whole city for safety issues, so I don't know why that's changing now, but.
Yeah, and I guess the comment I would have again is, I, I thought the direction from all of us was to light up the city.
Like it or not, yeah.
And I mean, Alderman Messina and I did take the heat on certain streets because we put up lights all along the street, not just on the corners and we got screamed at and yelled at by multiple people, but then yet in Ward Four, I mean, we only have them on the corners. I, I mean, I think we really have to define the policy better.
And I bet you those people now like the lights because the residents in my ward, they love the lights now. The ones who were against it, now they want the lights.
Scared to knock on the door.
Yeah, we haven't really asked, but the.
I mean, look, if we, if we were the guinea pigs and you just say, look, like it just was not worth the effort, I'm okay with that. I'm not gonna be offended if you guys want, if you guys want to scale back, learn from our mistake. We shouldn't force, I personally don't want to force them in other wards, learn from our mistake, I mean, learn from the heat we got and I, I don't care what, where, but I just think there needs to be a policy some way, one way or another. I'm not, sorry, go ahead.
Yeah, so that, I mean, that's what I would say. Mayor?
Right, I mean, on Gilbert, I think that was the first one, we go from, what's the street over there?
Mill?
Mill, all the way to Addison Road. It's a long stretch. I'm looking at some of these blocks. I don't know how, I don't know, they, they should be over 300 feet, but if you go 300 feet, then you're gonna be close to one of the corners, right? So what's the center of these blocks? I'm just curious as to how long these blocks are. Maybe they're only, maybe they're only 400 feet, so.
Director.
One in the middle would be 200.
I would have to do some field measurement to tell you how long the blocks are in Ward Four.
Yeah, because we want to be consistent, right? So from here, we're gonna go back to Ward Three, I think, right? Then back to Two and One, so, and there's some streets in Ward One that are pitch black from Potter to Dunley. You can't see in there, right? But those are maybe a little longer street than maybe some of these blocks. I'm just curious, where do we stand? Because how far is one in the middle of these streets? And I know, I get it, the power's not there and everything, but if, if we're lighting, we're lighting. If not, we want to be consistent, right?
Alderwoman Ames?
I was just gonna say about the length of the streets here compared to the length of the streets in the other wards and if we're not gonna be spending the full budget amount in this ward, then it would make sense to go, you know, and you said in another ward, that would be next on the list, because each of these areas that's on the corner, and then there are some, just like in the west area over here, that they are mid-block, you know, on Grove and then down towards the, on the school street, there's lights there too, so, and there's no sidewalks on any of those streets either, so there's just been no feedback or desire from anybody about, you know, very strongly wanting a, a street light at all and it's just not a very long block.
Alderman Messina?
I think Alderwoman Ames brings up a good point. Maybe if there is a policy, it should be around, schools are mandatory, churches mandatory, like within that, right? Because kids are walking home. So like, that is actually the fence I gave for Murray when I was getting crucified. It was like, it's a school. Like there are kids walking there. You may not like it and you want the serenity, but like, you need that, right? And so, I don't know, if the council's open to it, maybe it's not a topic for today, but maybe we just designate the certain areas where it's like, doesn't matter what ward, what you say, what we say, if there's a school, that there's maybe, again, a, a policy so that like, consistency in a policy. But again, designating certain areas where they're like safe zones, right? If we're gonna really light it up, I get it, don't put it on a random street just because we want to do it, but like where there's a school, where there's whatever.
We're adding one by Central Park too, by the parking lot on that side, so.
Right.
Alderman Sasmarsky?
Well, it's a double-edged sword. You guys are talking about safety, but what about sidewalks? You got people walking all over my, parts of our ward that don't have sidewalks yet. You guys got all of Royal Oaks, not one sidewalk, not one streetlight, got gas lights that we pay for as taxpayers. It's a double-edged sword, so. I'm just saying, don't tell us to put in star, you know, lights everywhere when people don't want them. But you guys don't have sidewalks. We don't have sidewalks, so.
Well, all I'm saying is.
Safety was brought up, safety of sidewalks, get people off the streets, correct? We have schools by us too.
Alderman Catalano, did you?
No, I was.
Okay. Alderman Woods, did you?
Given one ward, all the money from one ward and given to somebody else.
I think the city manager, I think we need to bring this up at, the policy up at a future date.
I was, I was typing everybody's comments.
Yeah, go ahead, Mayor.
So I mean, we're doing Ward Four. If you're looking for more lights.
They want less lights.
We don't want less lights. The streets aren't as long as other streets.
Right.
On here are good, is what we're saying. If I don't want to take them away.
Okay, well.
If there's extra money, then let it go to the next ward.
Okay, Alderman Messina?
I guess for the sake of this conversation, anyone I have to solve, are we okay to give direction? Like are we prepared to vote on whether we should designate specific safe zone areas, like a school, a church, a park? Like are we, is that something, Mayor, that we can designate tonight or is it?
They just need the approval for the lights they have ready to go. That's, that's what this is about.
Right, since it seems like we're okay with the proposed locations.
Right.
We can proceed with those and then I can get pricing for mid-blocks or other areas of the city and we can bring back the policy to later date as well.
My, I mean, yeah, I think we should just approve this and then we'll discuss the whole streetlight policy again and tighten that up.
I'll repeat what I said. Can you also, if you're gonna do mid-block, also do like safe zones? I don't care about mid-block, learn from our mistake. Whether you go one way or the other, less lights, more lights, I couldn't care less, but I do think it should be, if we can consider safe zones and maybe see what other towns do around like schools, parks.
Yes, absolutely.
Mayor?
Just to finish up, I just want to see how long are these streets as compared to other streets, right? If it's only 400 feet, so now you gotta start cutting it, you're only gonna put them in at 200 feet, right? So is that what we're gonna do? Just, that's why, that's why I asked the question. I saw only 51,000 spent, why not the rest of the money? That's, I didn't mean, I didn't mean to start a firestorm.
Question for Alderman Catalano real quick. Alderman Catalano, I believe your ward, the streets are probably similar to Ward Four, are they not?
No.
No.
Are they longer?
We have sidewalks.
Okay, okay. Alderman Ames, or Alderwoman Ames, sorry.
Just to clarify, so we are, if this passes, we're gonna just move forward with the lights that are proposed on here now. We're not waiting for additional lights to move forward on this.
Correct.
And then what is the timeframe for when these would be installed? Is it this year still?
Uh, we're at the mercy of COM Ed for some of them, so it's gonna depend on their schedule. I do expect it to be this year though.
Okay, thank you.
Did, I think we made a motion in a second.
Yes.
Uh, let's do a roll call, please.
Alderman Artwoods?
Yes.
Alderman Currielli?
Yes.
Alderman Messina?
Yes.
Jacob?
Yes.
Alderman Sasmarsky?
Yes.
Alderman Ames?
Yes.
Alderman Ardi Woods?
Yes.
Alderman Catalano?
Yes.
That passes. Next items to be considered at future meetings, skunk program modifications, September 5th, pump station piping replacement and painting, September 26th, Dominion Street signs, October 10th, Addison Road Water Main, fall, Elizabeth Drive Bridge Phase Two. Elizabeth Drive Bridge Phase 2 Engineering, fall. Tree ordinance amendments, fall. Do we have anything else? Alderman Catalano?
On that Dominion Street signs, can, I believe there's one stop sign there too. Can we include the stop sign?
Yeah, there's two stops. I think we're going to include them both.
Thank you.
Anything else? Make the motion to adjourn. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? We are adjourned.